I have a couple of practical issues to highlight. We have no fire drill planned tonight, so if there is a fire alarm, please make your way out of the building in a calm and orderly fashion as guided by staff. People with mobility issues should gather in the foyer on the left-hand side as you leave the chamber near the balustrade where assistance will be provided. Toilets are at the far end of the corridors either side of the chamber, ladies to the left as you leave and gents to the right. May I ask that if you need to leave and return to the council chamber during the meeting, you ensure that the doors do not slam after you and that you refrain from talking when another person is speaking. Please note that the meeting is being livestreamed on the council's YouTube channel. Apologies have been received from councillors Katz, Price and Worley. Could I ask councillor Stoneard to announce the Lord Mayor and Sheriff-elect for the next city year?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So the Lord Mayor next year will be councillor Paul Kendrick and the Sheriff-elect is Stuart Wright. He has a senior role at Aviva, particularly dealing with environmental issues, but he's also done a great deal of work and made a very large contribution to the real living wage.
Thank you councillor Stoneard. Could I ask you to say a few remarks about councillor Prinsley who has resigned as councillor?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. And as you may know, Peter Prinsley has decided to step back from his role as a councillor for Norwich City Council so that he can focus on his role as a member of parliament for Berries and Edmonds and Stonemarket. Councillor Prinsley joined the council in 2023 and was elected to serve on the scrutiny, planning and licensing committees. As a councillor, Peter always acted with great integrity and his gentle approach to politics resonated with all. From his surge in duties at Norfolk Norwich Hospital to his work as a councillor, Peter remains a true public servant. One of his many achievements during his time with us was assisting alongside councillors Mike and Sue Sands in the reopening of the Boots Pharmacy in Bothall, a vital service in the community. Peter's presence in the city hall will be sorely missed. Whilst we are saddened to see him leave this chamber, we know that parliament has gave him dedicated and principled repertory. So on behalf of the Labour group and this council, I extend our heartfelt thanks to Peter for his service and wish him every success in his parliamentary career. Thank you.
Could I ask councillor Galvin to say a few remarks about councillor Francis who has resigned as councillor?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Councillor Francis was elected to this council in May 2023 and we've been incredibly fortunate to have her in our group since then. She's a hardworking, creative, but above all compassionate person, as all who know her can attest to. Even though her mobility has been greatly impacted over the past year, she continued to work on behalf of the residents of Thor alongside her fellow ward members up until her resignation. She has taken the brave, yet difficult decision to step down at this time in order to focus on her recovery and to continue to look after her dependents. We'd all like to thank her for all her hard work and dedication and wish her a swift recovery and the best of luck in the future. And thank you very much for the badge which I'll pass on to her. Thank you.
Declarations of interest. The monitoring officer has issued a general dispensation for all members in order to take part in the debate and vote on item four, local government reorganisation. Interim submission, this is in relation to members allowances and any employment with local authorities. Do any members have any other declarations of interest to make on any items on the agenda? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I've spoken to the monitoring officer about the item which may or may not be below the line, so I plead to leave the chamber and that's discussed.
Thank you. Questions from the public. We have received one public question. Apologies councillor James.
Thank you. I believe I potentially discussed it as another interest. It's Dr Keen, we got unemployed in the NHS and we've got two things that relate to NHS funding coming up, but something is done through agenda change, separate.
Okay, thank you councillor James. Questions from the public. We have received one public question. The first is from Mrs Grace Courtney on behalf of the women and girls of the Commonwealth. Miss Courtney, would you please ask your question?
In Europe, 91% of streets that are named after people are named after men. In London, 87% of streets named after people are named after men. In Wildcross, there are 37 streets named after men and only one after a woman. Norwich women have a proud history of making changes in our city and beyond. Together with Norwich City Council, we are redressing the balance by naming all the streets on the proposed mark post to Bedford in honour of women. Does council agree that the time has come to extend the commitment to gender equality across all areas of Norwich in the future through your street name policy?
Thank you, Miss Courtney. Councillor Stoneard, will you please give your reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Miss Courtney, for asking the question. The answer in short is yes. The council works closely with the communities and developers to ensure that street names in new developments reflect the cultural and environmental heritage of the areas that they're built in. There are a number of rules that must be followed when proposing new street names. For example, existing names must not be duplicated and very similar sounding names are not permitted in order to avoid confusion. Roads can only be named after a person when the person is deceased. We're happy to consider requests for naming a road after a well-known local person, especially if they have worked harder than they can use it or have historical links to the city. We would be happy to consider naming new streets across the entirety of the city in celebration of Norwich women. Previous examples of this elsewhere in the city include streets named after Elsie Bertram, Elizabeth Frye, Edith Cavill and Patricia Hollis. For new developments, we will review the approved plans and the street naming and numbering process will take place in collaboration with developers, local community groups and other stakeholders to ensure the suggestions to new street names meet their aspirations and the criteria we have. So yes.
Thank you councillor Stoneard. Miss Courtney, you are allowed one supplementary question. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, we do.
When you look around you, what do you see? And how if you know that you belong? If names are full of famous, but only famous men, don't you think we're doing something wrong? So come on, you women, and take up some space. Shine in the spotlight as we've earned our place. Take back the credit for all that we've done and walk in the footsteps of those who are gone. There's more to a street sign than first meets the eye. More often than not, it's named after some guy that we name and we claim. Get down to business, make our fine city much more than just business. Think of the future and homes yet to come and let's get the next street named after your mum. So come on, you women, and take up some space. Shine in the spotlight as we've earned our place. Take back the credit for all that we've done and walk in the footsteps of those who are gone. And walk in the footsteps of those who are gone.
Thank you. I commend you for your singing and costumes. Councillor Stoneard, will you please give your reply?
You don't hear me sing, you really don't hear me sing. That was wonderful, by the way. So you've now serenaded us at cabinet and here and both times have been wonderful. So thank you very much for coming along and brightening up our meeting a little bit.
Thank you councillor Stoneard. Petitions, we have no petitions that have been received. The minutes, I call upon councillor Stoneard to move the minutes of the meeting held on the 25th of February 2025.
I propose, Lord Mayor...
Thank you. I call upon councillor Galvin to second the minutes.
Second, dear mayor.
Thank you. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions carried. Item four, local government reorganisation, interim submission. I call upon councillor Stoneard to move item four.
So in keeping with how the meeting's gone so far, I was tempted to present this report through the medium of dance, but I thought better than that and I think I'll just read it out. Councillor, as you know, the government has invited councils to submit proposals for local government reorganisation. Norwich has responded to that call with ambition, collaboration and clarity of purpose. This represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Greater Norwich to grasp so that it can shape its own destiny. Greater Norwich is a distinct entity within Norfolk with a strong sense of place and the needs and challenges which are markedly different to any other part of the county. It needs a single council which can concentrate on the needs of the urban area, drive growth and prosperity and improve the lives of its citizens. It needs elected representatives who actually live and work within the urban area, who truly understand the challenges, what makes it tick and the needs of its local communities. So over the past few months, we've worked closely with our six district council colleagues and partners to shape a vision. It isn't just about structures and governments, but about how we deliver for the people and businesses of our city and how we secure Norwich's place at the heart of regional and national growth. The work completed, including an independent appraisal by the consultant firm Deloitte, confirms that the three unitary model for Norfolk is a strong adoption. Under this model, a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority would sit alongside two other unitary authorities, allowing each to focus on the distinct needs of their areas. This is not a one-size-fits-all, it's targeted place-based governments that can deliver real outcomes. The case for Greater Norwich Unitary is clear. Norwich is already Norfolk's economic powerhouse. Our economy is worth 9.9 billion pounds. We support 1,000, 158,000 jobs and over 10,000 businesses. Since 2010, Greater Norwich's economy has grown by 64%, outpacing cities like Birmingham and Sheffield. And beyond these numbers, Norwich is home to world-class sectors, financial services led by Aviva and Marsh, a dynamic and growing creative industry sector, a life sciences hub of national importance at the Norwich Research Park. These strengths benefit not just our city, but the wider county, the region, and they contribute to UK PLC. But we also face challenges, deep-rooted inequalities, housing pressures and health outcomes that differ starkly from rural Norfolk. A Greater Norwich Unitary Authority would allow us to design and deliver services tailored to these urban realities rather than fitting urban lead into rural frameworks. A single unitary council for Greater Norwich would be able to provide and coordinate key services and ensure better outcomes for citizens to improve their lives, including coordinating improvements in education, social care, children's services and housing, also coordinating with the local NHS. In this way, it would be a better place, it would be better able to tackle inequalities, improve educational attainment, develop workplace skills, improve health and ensure better life opportunities for citizens, all of which would improve their health, wellbeing and quality of life. Such an authority would also be able to adopt an integrated transport plan, making getting into and around the city easier and more sustainable, coordinating all modes of transport so that they work better for people. We can save with confidence that Norwich is ready for this. Our council has a strong track record of good governance and financial management. We manage a 1.2 billion pound asset base and healthy reserves. We are stable, sustainable and ready to deliver from day one and for decades to come. And beyond the immediate benefits, this move positions Norwich as a key player in the future development. As the only key city in the east of England, we have a vital role to play in driving forward the ambitions of a Norfolk and Suffolk mayor of combined authority. This is of course an interim submission, but it sets a stage for a final detailed proposal in September. Between now and then, we would engage widely with residents, businesses, community groups and partners to ensure this proposal is shaped by local voices and priorities. In closing, I say again that Greater Norwich is unique within Norfolk. It is a distinct urban entity with different needs, challenges and opportunities to its largely rural interests. Its demography and economy are unlike any other parts of the county. It is the economic and cultural capital of the region and drives growth. That is why Greater Norwich needs its own single unitary council, where people who actually live and work here, who understand the city and who really know their local communities can represent the interests of their residents. Councillor, I urge you to support these proposals tonight. Let's grasp this opportunity for the people of Greater Norwich.
Thank you councillor Stoneard. I call upon councillor Harper to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm a second performer, I have the right to speak.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, can I make a point of order, please? I'd like to say that because of the significance of this item and also the fact that as chair of scrutiny, I've agreed to that the calling will be disappplied when it comes to Canberra tomorrow, I therefore like to move under 72F of the constitution to suspend procedure rule 96. I want the members to speak as many times as they like during this debate. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wright. Do I have a second for this procedural motion? Thank you councillor Aykroyd. We will now move to the vote on whether to suspend the procedural rule 96 for the duration of this item. All those in favour? All those against? This item is carried. I now invite group spokespersons to speak. Councillor Calvert?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A sense of, excuse me, a sense of place and a sense of belonging are massive parts of who we are and how we identify ourselves. Despite the increasing ability to be transported quicker from one place to another, most of us have a strong notion of where we live, rooted in a place and in a community. Sure, we can move where we live, work and spend time, just as our communities can accept new people and change and grow as a result, but fundamentally, a sense of place is important and we all want to have input into how our locality changes and develops over time. When residents contact us, they expect us, their elected representatives, to know the area they're talking about. They expect us to be familiar with the geography, they want us to know the issues, and we do. That is because we work in our communities and what is important to them is important to us. Our opinions might differ about how best to tackle an issue, but our recognition of the issues involved is common ground across this chamber and across the city. Often residents are surprised at how little ability individual members have to make change in their communities and how far both they and we are from being able to make, able to effect change. Whether it's a large change or something as simple as getting a new bench in the local park, the decision-making can often feel distant. If anything, we should empower communities to be able to make the decisions that affect them by moving to a unitary authority covering a wider urban area, we do that. We bring powers closer to those they affect. While we can all respect the efforts of the members from Galston, Loden and the Burdens put in, put in to forward the interests of their constituents, simple fact remains that their understanding and priorities will never be the same as those who live in urban areas. Urban areas where people are on average younger, more likely to have been born elsewhere, more likely to live in privately rented and socially rented houses, less likely to drive, more likely to cycle. They are people who have chosen to live in an urban area because they see the benefits that it brings, closer to friends, neighbours, shops, schools, a closer community. Should everyone have to live in this way? No, of course not. But those who have should be able to make the decisions about how their area works rather than those decisions being made for the benefit of those who have chosen to live elsewhere. If the government chooses a unitary authority with the whole of Norfolk, local residents will lose what little control they have over what happens in their area. Instead, all decisions will be made for the benefit of those who have chosen to live in a different way and in a different place. If we have to have, if we are to have local democracy, it must be exactly that, local and democratic. If we are to have a unitary system imposed upon us to save the central government from providing proper funding, a three-unitary model is the best option for us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Calvert. Councillor Wright?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As a Liberal Democrat councillor, I'm proud to speak today to support what's probably the most important set decisions I've been involved with in my 15 years of this council. The proposed local government reorganisation, specifically the creation of a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority, is not just a bureaucratic reshuffle, it's a step towards a more effective, responsive and prosperous future for our community. Across the county, councils may differ on how many unitaries should be created. As Liberal Democrats, we believe in devolving power to the lowest possible entity. So maybe three unitary councils are too few. What about all districts that be converted into unitaries? Well, real quality means we have to work with what is achievable and we can't allow the perfect to be the enemy of the good. The county council's proposal for a single unitary is unwieldy and undemocratic. Decisions will be taken miles away from the areas they impact and the sense of place so important for the communities will be removed at the stroke of a pen. So to quote De La Sol, three, that's the magic number. The supporting document states that the case for a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority is built on four interdependent pillars, economic ambition, enhancing public service delivery, financial resilience and connectivity. These pillars are not just theoretical concepts, they're the foundation for which we can build a thriving, inclusive and sustainable urban centre. But let's talk about economic ambition. Norwich is not just another city, I should say, I guess that's unusual to sort of person that councillor Calvert suggested, because I was born here, so I've known nothing else other than living in even larger cities. Anyway, so Norwich is not just another city, it's an economic powerhouse in the east of England. Since 2010, the Greater Norwich economy has grown by 64%, outstripping the performance of core cities like Birmingham and Sheffield. This growth is not accidental, it's resulted strategic planning, innovation and the hard work of our residents and businesses. By establishing a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority, we can further enhance its economic potential, creating more jobs, attracting investment and driving regional prosperity. Secondly, enhancing public service delivery is crucial. The Greater Norwich area faces unique challenges and opportunities that require tailored place-based solutions. A unitary authority will allow us to design and deliver services that meet specific needs for our communities, whether it's addressing deep-rooted inequalities, improving housing or enhancing the central public services, a localised approach will ensure that we are more responsive and effective in meeting the needs of our residents. Financial resilience is another key pillar. Norwich City Council has a history of good financial management with significant asset base and healthy reserves. This financial stability will be further strengthened by the creation of a unitary authority, allowing us to better withstand financial shocks and invest in the long-term sustainability of our community. By streamlining processes and eliminating duplication, we can achieve significant savings and ensure that public funds are used more efficiently. Connectivity is the final pillar. Norwich is one of 27 identified key cities across the country and the only one in the east of England. This unique position allows us to act as an anchor, helping the government deliver on its policy aims and bringing sustainable economic prosperity to the region. Improved connectivity will not only enhance our economic prospects, but also improve the quality and life of our residents by making easy access to services, education and employment opportunities. In conclusion, the creation of a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority is a necessary bold step towards a brighter future for our city and its residents. It's an opportunity to build on our strengths, address our challenges and create a more prosperous, inclusive and sustainable community. We endorse the three-unitary proposal for Norfolk is outlined in the report and wholeheartedly recommend to Canberra that this interim report should be submitted to government. Additionally, we note the emerging plans for engagement on the issues before the final report is submitted in September. As a Liberal Democrat, I believe in the power of local government to make a real difference to people's data-learners and I'm confident that this reorganisation will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wright. Councillor Davies?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support the idea of a three-council model for Grace Norwich. It makes sense. Norwich, Borland and South Norfolk are already closely linked. People don't live their lives according to council boundaries, so our local government should reflect that reality. But while the structure might be right, the way we're getting there is all wrong. This process is moving too fast with little real engagement from the people who will actually be affected. If we're making decisions that will shape our communities for decades, we need to take the time to do it properly and to do it with them, not just for them. One claim of admission, Lord, is social housing. Norwich City Council owns and manages thousands of homes, good affordable homes that people rely on. It has decades of experience delivering and maintaining social housing in a way that other councils simply don't, yet in all discussions about this new structure, housing barely gets a mention. Where's the plan to protect and expand this stock to ensure people continue to have access to secure affordable homes? Housing isn't an afterthought, it's fundamental to people's lives. And this isn't just about bricks and mortar. Good housing is the foundation of good health. Poor quality housing leads to respiratory problems, mental health struggles and long-term illness, climate pressures onto the NHS. Secure affordable homes mean children can grow up in a stable environment, do better in school and have a fair shot at a good future. They also boost the economy because when people aren't struggling with high rents or poor conditions, they have more money to spend in their local communities. Ignoring housing in this plan isn't just shortsighted, it's irresponsible. And what about the environment? Norwich has been leading the way in tackling the climate crisis, but there's little in this plan about how we continue that momentum. If we're talking about the future of Greater Norwich, we should be talking about how we make it greener, more sustainable and better for the next generation. So yes, I support the principle of a Greater Norwich model, but this process needs to slow down. We need to listen to the people it affects and we need to make sure that social housing, the environment and real community needs aren't ignored in the rush to reorganise. Because at the end of the day, local government isn't just about efficiencies, it's about people and we owe it to them to get it right.
Thank you councillor Davies. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Evans-Sanders?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think we've all agreed that the time has ultimately come to reorganise local government and it's good to see that, yeah, we're all aware that we do need to keep democracy in mind and I think everyone here agrees with that, we want to see democratic structures put in place. But there've been lots of arguments in county by various people there, should I say, I won't name anyone, proposing a single unitary model for Norfolk which is completely untenable because that assumes that Norfolk is an amorphous plain without any areas of dominance. It makes complete utter sense to have a three-unitary model with Norwich as a unitary on extended boundaries. As we've started to explore the whole concept of unitary authorities, it reminded me of my days back in uni studying a degree in education and geography and the concept of a central place theory and two of the biggest proponents of this, there's a chap by name called Cristala and then another one called Lersch. And Lersch's theory is put in place, the fact that we don't live on an amorphous or uniform plane, it recognises that there are areas of concentration of economic activity, of employment, of industry. And that is what Norwich represents across Norfolk. It's an attractor and to go for a single unitary or even just a two-unitary model, it would mean the identity of Norwich would be lost, it would mean there would be no recognition of Norwich acting as a powerhouse for the entire county and also we would end up with an imbalance system, particularly if we went for a two-unitary model because of course Norwich would have to be one or the other and that means one or the other would achieve total economic dominance over the others. The three-unitary model puts the unitary authorities more or less on an equal footing, but the others will have much different focus because of course they'll be rural based with some larger towns to act as attractors, but the simple fact... But the simple fact is Norwich is the economic powerhouse of the county. It attracts employment, industry, all sorts of services, and of course represents the highest values in terms of prosperity and land across the county. It's a simple fact. And so for this reason, of course, it makes complete and utter logical sense for Norwich to be given a unitary status on extended boundaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Sanders. Are there any other councillors that we should speak? Councillor Galvin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you to everyone who's spoken so far, and thanks for all the work to get us to this stage, which has been intense, we all know. And for the opportunity for councillors to be part of this as the working group that's been set up, which, because we understand this is really the only, only the beginning of the report. We really in the main support the recommendation for reasons including that Norwich is out of its tight boundary, and we'd have this strong sense of civic pride we've all spoken about with an enlarged boundary, enabling us as a city to better determine our future, widen our council tax bases as soon as we can, facilitate better strategic planning in around Norwich and support the city centre, very important, and very important to address poverty deprivation and need in a more rounded way, and very, very importantly, provide a strong voice for Norwich on the combined authority for one of the UK's important regional cities. I wanted to say it's important to note that the options appraisal is a work in progress and an evolving document, and we're very much hoping that it evolves a lot. The interim submissions next to nothing about nature, climate, culture, tourism, anything detailed on quality of life or social housing, as has been mentioned, or transport, or climate resilience, or the green economy, for instance, retrofitting of housing stocks. So these are huge admissions. I'm reading the report, you see in Norwich that's an economic powerhouse mainly, but divorced from its surroundings and built somehow on a need for care homes. So we've, you know, we've spent a lot of money on expensive consultants, and I just think we need to have a bit more detail, a bit more flesh on the bones, and hopefully we'll get that going forward. We know that the drive is perhaps not surprisingly, but still depressingly, as I've echoed in the reports, is for economic growth for its own sake, without saying anything about purpose. I don't think you can isolate growth from public good. We need to sort of really drill down on that for our city and understand what that will mean. Perhaps this will come when we have meaningful engagement with all the key stakeholders, in particular with local communities, which is promised, and we're told this is currently being planned and will have a key impact in finalising the options appraisal. And it will also play a key role in defining the specific boundaries for the proposed unitaries in each option, and taking into account local views on that. So I'm glad we're told the findings in this paper should be considered transitional and interim until further discussions and in particular, public engagement can be undertaken. And we say that we see this as part of our corporate plan work. It's known as a community-led plan, although we don't really know who made up this community leading it, because we haven't really checked who it was. We've got some information there, but we still don't really know the background of the people that gave us that information. And in this report, it says three times that we still don't plan to gather demographic information on the input, and I have to take exception with that. It says people won't be candid if we ask them.
Councillor Galvin, can you draw to a close, please?
Yeah, so there are a few points that we'd like to make to amend this, not formally now, but I'd like to bring them to you. I know where time is tight, but around the public engagement layer. I mean, I can stop speaking and start again any minute if you like. Does it work like that? I've got about two more paragraphs. But there are some things we'd like to add, we'd like to propose around the public engagement layer, because there were some omissions, but I can bring them to offices afterwards if that would be more helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Somebody who will be aware of this may not, but if you go to the top of the staircases in this hall, in the city hall, on the guardrail are symbols of services that the city gave when it was opened, when it was opened as a unitary, as it had been a unitary. And it's a nice thought that a unitary is coming home to Norwich, and I'm reminded of councillor Drives' speech last week, "We've witnessed the opposite." So it's coming back, and I'm a source of comment. It's nice to see councillor, or hear councillor Sands. As an academic, it warmed my heart to hear somebody citing some sources on the subject, so thank you for that. This is a proposal that has really been thought about and thought before, though. It's not a Norwich and then, you know, the delta of the hang of. One of the nice things about it, it's been divided into three more or less equal parts. There is a major centre with a different nature in each part, and, you know, think about Brett Young and the generation industry. And of course, there is a maritime element, and that will increase over time. We go over to Kingsley with its number of things, including manufacturing on the agricultural side, and as well as one of the biggest providers of shellfish in the country. They are very different parts, good centres, good hubs for business and growth, and this proposal recognises that. And it's interesting, I was looking just at a wing, about other unitaries, Nottingham is about the size that we think will be. Derby, another unitary, is less. In fact, if you take those three counties that produce that famous cheese, famous moe cheese, then those three together with unitaries within them are not much bigger. Norwich, just on those numbers, deserves to be a unitary. It has great potential for growth, as we talked about. I'd also like to just mention one thing that people always seem to miss, because it always seemed to go below the radar, and that's engineering. The various engineering companies, people manufacturing, not on the scale of car manufacturing, well, actually, that's not true, is it? But, you know, we've got Ford or British Airlan or whatever it is these days, but there are some really high-spec careful.
Councillor Maguire, could you conclude, please?
I will, I will. So let's hear it for the engineering businesses in this city and beyond as well, another contributor. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shinira.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I think I'm going to be a lone voice in this one, but I think what I'm going to say needs to be, needs to be heard, because I do have concerns about the whole issue, whether that be the suspension of elections and other factors. But going back to the council mergers or amalgamations or however the split is going to be, I understand that of course that can ensure efficiencies, but the cynic in me thinks that this is nothing other than a sort of power money grab by the government trying to shore up struggling upper-tier councils that are really being completely hamstrung by the ever increasing costs associated with social care and children's services, by giving them access to the reserves that have been built up and are currently held by lower-tier district councils. And as I said, I suspect I am going to be a lone voice on this, but I do have some major concerns also in the reports that were given about the sort of academic rigor about them, and concerns that have yet to be fully assuaged based upon what I've had to say and questions I've raised with officers. I do fear that we are curating ourselves by going down the three-unitary route. And by the way, just to reassure you, I'm not in favour of a unitary for Norfolk at the whole, that would be, as councillor Sands said, far too large and probably unmanageable. But I am in favour of two councils for Norfolk, because I do believe that they would both better meet the government's criteria, but also ultimately ensure better efficiencies and sustainability, something that our residents kind of put their faith in us to achieve as their councillors. And from a personal point of view, having lived in Glasgow, a city which is all urban basically, you can see there how the residents have to pay more for the services that are provided by the city than in the more affluent surrounding areas like East Brentfordshire, even though residents in East Brentfordshire can benefit from the services provided by next doors in Glasgow. And I won't worry that by bringing in relatively tight boundaries around Greater Norwich, certainly far tighter than in East Norfolk, we are removing the more affluent council tax base that could pay for the services that our city's residents could benefit from and ultimately, I think, deserve. Indeed, having two councils would be closer to meeting the government's criteria in terms of the minimum population size of a million, which should help withstand future financial shocks, and we're seeing those financial shocks across unitaries and upper-tier councils, as I mentioned, with regards to ballooning social care costs and costs associated with children's services. And so I do think that this would, that this sort of east-west split would be better, because a lot of what we're hoping for in this three-way split with this Greater Norwich is predicated on a lot of growth around those areas that are currently on the periphery of Norwich. And remember, this is something that happens basically every fifty, sixty years of government reorganisation or local government reorganisation, so we need to future-proof it for the long term, or at least for the medium term, for those fifty years. And I do think that the two council model would be the best deal for residents today and in the future. Now, I do fully understand the argument, of course, about the democratic deficit with more progressive voting and thinking Norwich residents regularly potentially are voted by the more conservative rural areas of what would be East Norfolk. But I actually think that.
Councillor Shinira, you are out of time.
Okay. Basically, I imagine that this could lead to a no-overall control, and that's what I think is best for councils. I could speak longer on this, but I'm just going to adopt the role of a sort of quasi-Cassandra, warning about rushing into this headlong without thinking about the potential ramifications in the next decades. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Shinira.
Lord Mayor, point of order, please. I wonder whether it might help if I move under seventy-two F to suspend paragraph ninety-five so that there is no time limit or members' interventions.
Do I have a second? Right. All those in favour? All those against? That is carried. Councillor Harper.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to some of the points that I've heard around the lack of detail in the submission, which is one to my colleagues, that this is our high-level submission, it's an interim submission that commits us to a model, and there will be time for detail later on as we progress towards our more detailed submission. And that will of course be underpinned by an ambitious consultation programme. I think I'm particularly keen to, you know, welcome the positivity we've heard about Norwich's social housing delivery. It's not often we hear in opposition houses praising our social housing delivery, but I think it is worthy of praise. Under councillor Jones's leadership, we've made a great drive forward on satisfaction on repairs and void turnarounds, and I think we stand ready to share that experience with other local authorities, other district councils, as we, I hope, move towards a unitary. I think, you know, we should make no mistake that the choices we make this evening, if accepted by the government, will shape how we deliver services, grow our economy and empower our communities for decades to come. A three-unitary model, including the Greater Norwich Authority, is absolutely the right outcome for our council, and it's the right outcome for our fine city. It's the option that reflects our economic geography, as we talked about, and shows us local decision-making. I think it also reflects our social geography and provides resilience and the efficiency that we need to meet future challenges. And as others have said, we need a system and political leadership that reflects our communities and supports the ambitions of the city and of the county. As the leader of the council has already said, Norwich is the economic powerhouse of Norfolk. You know, we are driving innovation, we are driving employment, we are driving investment, and we're driving social change. A Greater Norwich Unitary would create a single coherent authority that could better plan the things like social housing, the transport, our economic development, our environment, in our environment and meeting our network obligations and ambitions, and ensuring the city and its surrounding areas reach their full potential. We, you know, know we're a diverse county, and rural, and its rural areas have different needs from those of Greater Norwich, and it's important that we're mindful about what, you know, what's right for the rest of the county as the government guidance sets out. I think what I feel, we feel on the side that a second and a third unitary covering west and east Norfolk would ensure that rural communities have leadership focused on their distinct challenges, be it transport connectivity, access to services, how you deliver electrification. I know it's a difficult issue for the Greens, because, you know, they've proposed electrification in Suffolk, but, you know, these are things we have to work through. You know, it's important for us to drive and improve access to services and making sure that our agricultural and coastal economies get what they need. People have already spoken about the importance of making sure that every pound we spend delivers maximum benefit. For us, a three-unitary model allows for cost savings, but without creating authorities that are too large and disconnected from local. So we think a three-unitary model with Greater Norwich at its heart is the right solution for today, but it's also the right solution for Norfolk's future. And I hope we can agree this proposal tonight, move forward to making the detailed case to government, making those arguments, engaging with our communities and delivering on the change our county and our city needs.
Thank you, councillor Harper. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Whilst I appreciate and support the qualitative argument for the three-unitary model as eloquently described by everybody in the room, I do have concerns regarding the integrity of the external consultants reaching these views in their quantitative and ranking manner. Table one within the Deloitte report involves the ranking of the six criteria set out by government, which results in their endorsement of the three-tier model. I believe it is improper to consider these rankings without adequate weighting applied to each, as is noted within the report. This council continually states how prioritising service delivery and being fiscally responsible is of utmost importance. The two very criteria where consultants identify that the three-unitary model is not the optimal choice for these very two subjects. Currently, the same weighting is applied to the pandering to the significantly less important support devolution arrangements. Given the point ranking between two unitaries and three unitaries is only just two, I wonder how considering these weightings would bring these models potentially even closer together, considering the two most important ones are ones that aren't ranking the third unitary as the highest. I hope the submission to national government will strongly highlight the need for this weighting of these six criterias, so we as a council can make an accurate and robust case towards the best option, whatever it may be. I also hope that members of the cross-party working group can work together to generate our own agreeable consensus on the weighting of this criteria. Whilst I currently endorse the three-council model and the qualitative arguments discussed, I hope further work to fully consider the weighting of the six criteria to cement this case and confirm we are following the best outcome for all of Norfolk and its residents.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. Councillor Hopman.
Thank you very much. I believe that in principle, a Greater Norwich Unitary Authority is the best of the options on the table, in that it keeps power closer, at least closer, thereby increasing accountability and so I'd be voting in favour of that proposal. But it's a bit difficult to feel excited about this proposal, given how it ended up in front of us, in a rush and without much meaningful consultation with residents so far. So residents will be concerned going forward, but the reports don't commit to monitoring who we speak to in demographic terms, and so we won't know whose views we actually think to and whose views we're ignoring. Finally, it's been touched upon before, but I think that's an important omission here, namely the likely medium-term impacts of climate breakdown on Norwich and Norfolk. This post, and imagine Norwich and Norfolk even, just that years from now, which is the timeframe of these proposals. which is the timeframe of these proposals. How we're moving during fresh waters, grass, and how we're moving during food insecurity. The present report builds on a vision of the future, but climate changes very often in seasons. A future with population, with life to live in, but one in the current government that's obligated to protect. I also quickly mention the issue of community engagement and neighbourhood empowerment. So the government secretary of state proposed for unitary local government lists community engagement and general opportunity for neighbourhood empowerment as one of six criteria. The Deloitte report considers the options against six criteria. It's six, one being stronger community engagement. The council's submission does mention the city's work on engaging communities, such as getting to Norwich, or give examples of neighbourhood empowerment. Secondly, the council doesn't address how it will meet the government criteria. Instead, the council report refers to four interdependent pillars: economic ambition, enhanced public service delivery, financial resilience, connectivity, enable community engagement and neighbourhood empowerment on the rest of this report. Also, this may clear where the pillars came from. So the Great York Forum for clarification and providing. So I understand that many of you might be fixed between today and Friday, but let's make a real commitment to address these real issues in our September mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hotma. Councillor Jones?
Maybe I'm right, because I am really truly excited by the opportunity this gives us. I think for anyone who works in health, social care, or anything that involves working people who are impacted by deprivation, we understand how disconnected public services make it far more challenging in terms of improving outcomes for people. For me, the ability to join up what sits at county to county level with what sits at district level makes us far stronger in facing those challenges and improving lives of our citizens, and that can only be a good thing. And I can assure us that whilst I'm still here, I will continue to champion social housing. It's at the heart of who Norwich is, be it Norwich City Council or when we move forward to Greater Norwich. I know that, I think that is something that is the heart of, that's something in Norwich we hold so close to our hearts, that I think that will continue to go forward strongly. And I may, I think, I believe everyone in this chamber will continue to put that front and centre, so I don't have a significant worry, but we will continue to make sure that that's considered. But I think, yeah, it's about improving lives and understanding how that works at a local level. I work everywhere, I work from Wales going down to Dis in my day-to-day job, and I know that the challenges people face, and particularly where it surrounds deprivation, are actually the things that drive those are quite different when you move out to rural areas to the challenges we see within the Greater Norwich boundary. So I think the ability for us to bring resources together and have a joined-up approach that works for our residents is such an exciting opportunity and can be really quite monumental and a not-so-lighted opportunity to shift outcomes for people, be it around their future, their aspirations, their education, their health. These are all things that could be changed for the better. So for me, that is an incredibly exciting opportunity, and I think this could bring that forward for us.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. Are there any other councillors who wish to speak? Councillor Hampton?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I think there's been lots of really good points made tonight, but I'll try and get around what I was about to say a few I don't necessarily agree with so much, which I'll try and touch on. But I think it's good that we're having a further positive debate on this. As has been outlined many times, it is clear that Norwich does have a completely distinct demographic from the rest of Norfolk, which is quantified, I think, by Health Iners Report, as well as unique economic and social challenges. So I think anchoring an authority on Norwich is always going to be a sensible starting point. It means we'll be able to design services to meet the needs of this urban area, focus on tackling the challenges and maximising the benefits that are unique to here, as well as building up the skills in the organisation and the wider economy to support this. And as has been said, Norwich deserves to be governed by councils who live here, who represent residents within the city and understand the communities here. This isn't the case currently and likely to remain of the case in a two- or one-unitary model. And to take an example with my portfolio is, of course, really frustrating that no council elected in Norwich has any decision-making powers over our city's transport, for example. But the building on that principle of the proposed Greater Norwich unitary authority model with a common population of three hundred thousand and housing growth protection to add for fifty thousand residents in the local plan period, creating authority that's the size that increases resilience, it provides scale and geography to promote sustainable development and enable growth, and it allows for intuitive efficiency savings. And personally, I think the benefits of this three-unitary model I set out in the report that have otherwise been discussed tonight do go to show that it certainly isn't purely about trying to make cuts or savings. But more broadly, I think the geography in front of us makes sense to residents and to their experiences. It brings people together who may not be currently within Norwich City Council brackets, but still very much identify from being in Norwich, who work here, access services here, shop and socialise here, and already have a strong connection with the city. As has been said, it's tailored with people's sense of place and feeling of where they belong. And I think getting that sense and making this a common sense arrangement in people's minds is something that's really important when it does come to getting public buy-in, whether that's in this initial process of designing a greater local government form and in the longer term, in the democratic processes which are going to Greater Norwich into the future. And I think it's fairly natural that as Norwich councillors, who all represent geographies that would sit within a Greater Norwich area, that we are basically talking about focusing on the benefits. This three-unitary model will bring for Norwich, but we can't decide how this arrangement has been designed to be coherent, counted by two, recognising industry hubs elsewhere in Norfolk, the opportunities and challenges posed to those areas, and the need to maintain some of the benefits those industries bring in those communities as well. As reported, western areas of Norfolk and the agri-food sector there is vital for the nation's food security, whereas Greater Yarmouth is integral for energy security with significant growth potential arising from its offshore wind capacity. And just to quickly reflect on some of the points that have been made about a supposed lack of detail around areas, so relevance to my portfolio of climate and environment, for example. As Councillor Harper says, this report in front of us today is a higher level piece of work to make sure we get the basic model of governance of that basic geography right. A lot of the benefits that this work outlines, on things like growth, resilience, enhanced democracy, apply to the climate sector and our ability to take climate action as much as any other. And they are going to bring inherent benefits in taking further climate action, improving our resilience further, et cetera. The level of detail being asked forward times, of course, will be considered in due course. But at the same time, of course, I mentioned we need to meaningfully consult. So surely we need that to feed into that process in due course when it's the appropriate time and timetable allowed. So I do personally strongly support the formation of a Greater Norwich unitary authority as part of specifically a three-unitary model for Norfolk. I think it works best for our city, the county region and probably wider as well. So I'm pleased to back this report tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Hampton. Councillor Calvert?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. There has been mention of community engagement and community empowerment, and I have to say there is, and will have to be considerable work on how we go forward with this. Norwich is, unlike the rest of the county, we don't have a great deal of low-level democracy. If you want to bring change about in Norwich, you have to get involved in the political process. And to be honest with you, the bar is quite high on to become a councillor at the city authority is the only way to make changes at a local level. Other parts of what would become Greater Norwich, and to be honest, most of the county, have much better community empowerment. They have parish councils. We don't have such a culture in Norwich. We don't have parish councils. Nor unlike other local authorities without parish councils, we don't have area committees either. The notion of community empowerment unfortunately is very much lacking in Norwich. We need to think very carefully, very closely about how we empower local communities, especially if we are to expand or add new authorities to form, which absorbs parish councils and leaves Norwich without that lowest level of local democracy. We need to think carefully about how that works. Otherwise, we will have a system where some people have direct and local democracy and the people in historic the city of Norwich do not. So careful thought needs to go into how we empower local communities. And I hope we will see that come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Calvert. Councillor Kendrick?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the Kendrick member for resources, I think it is for me to address the issue in the white paper of whether a unitary council of half a million people is somehow the most efficient size of council. Indeed, I recently attended a local government conference in Manchester where the local government minister, as he reported that message. I disagree. I think these three-unitary options for Norfolk is the best. Now, I do accept there has to be an immense size for a unitary authority. We can't have parish unitary councils of about seven hundred residents. However, I believe that a unitary council of perhaps a hundred thousand or more residents can be efficient. Firstly, can I remind you that the largest level authority in England has its burden of city council, the population of over a million, that to issue a six-one-point-poll notice is in financial distress. It has not proven to be super efficient, just super big. And also, if you look at other large councils such as Kent County Council or Hampshire County Council, they too are in financial difficulties. Indeed, I was once an elected member on Kent County Council, and I think it was too big. You had to have services, like social services, at high heights divided up into various area offices. I wish to explain why I think a unitary authority of perhaps as little as a hundred thousand can be an effective administrative unit. I offer you the example of the Island Man, Guernsey and Jersey, which have a population of about a hundred thousand people. These island governments not only run the kind of services that would be run by a unitary authority, they also run the round health service, a legal service and taxation service. Now, indeed, the Island Man is one of the, it even runs its own railways. Indeed, it is the only state-run steam railway owner in the world, which goes around some dudges that will err in one of my great hobbies, I should say, are steam engines. The residents of the Island Man certainly nor should be merged into Lancashire County Council to be more efficient, nor do the residents of Jersey or Guernsey which should be merged into Hampshire County Council to be efficient. Without doubt, they are efficient level authorities with this keen sense of identity. And the size of the Greater Norwich is more than capable and large enough to be an effective unitary authority. I know of no credible research that contradicts that. Norwich with its suburbs would be a size that would be highly effective, but also local. I believe that you use three-unitary model is not only best for Norwich and its suburbs, it's also good, for example, for Greater Yarmouth, which in a two-unitary model would be somewhat overshadowed by Norwich. So I hopefully expect that this council will adopt these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kendrick. Do any of the councillors wish to speak? Councillor Wright?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to thank Councillor Shmira for his well-argued comments for a two-unitary model. I'm afraid I don't disagree with him. I don't agree with Councillor Shmira. But you picked up our appointed plans with a progressive voting system, and I would really like to see as part of this, maybe, maybe come out of the way here, but Norwich being a pilot for some kind of single transfer vote or alternative for our new authority. We cannot have a situation in this country where we are electing local councillors on first past the post for further to longer, I am sure.
Thank you, Councillor Wright. Councillor Mike Sands?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I, yeah, like, Councillor, I do respectfully acknowledge the comments that Councillor Shmira made, that simply a two-unitary model would not work. You'd have a rich cousin and a poor cousin. The authority with Norwich in it is going to be powering ahead. The authority without Norwich is going to be simply a languishing rural authority, nor would a single unitary across the county work. We know, for example, that the finances of county council are in somewhat disarray and there is even talk of a section, was it one four notice being issued in county because of the mismanagement of all of the county services, which of course draws in the bulk of the council tax across the county. A three-unitary model is going to be a balance. And that balance will give two largely rural-based unitaries the ability to manage their affairs with their concerns largely rural-based. I recognise that they do have parish councils. They have an entirely different view on life compared to the city. For example, in county councils, I've heard time and time again from county councils in rural areas who say, well, my village doesn't have street lights at all, so why do you want them on in the city? They just, there's a complete disconnect between a lot of rural thinking compared to the thinking in Norwich as a city. Norwich needs to be self-determined. It needs a unitary authority on extended boundaries, which will give it room to grow, to build more social housing, as Councillor Jones has already said. And of course, it acts as an attractor. And as an attractor, it's going to increase in terms of business, commerce, retail. And those things will filter out into rural areas as people move around. So yes, definitely, we do need change. A two-unitary model will create simply a total imbalance. You're going to end up with probably two-thirds of the population in one unitary, one-third of the population in the other. And whichever authority has Norwich within its bay area, we should say, is going to be powering ahead. And within a few short years, you're going to have an even greater imbalance as population grows and employment grows, as it will. So we do need recognition that a three-unitary authority is the only way to go, the only way to go economically, socially and developmental-wise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Sands. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Stunard, would you like to reply?
Thank you, everybody, for your very helpful and interesting, insightful comments. I'm going to respond to some of the specifics that have been raised. And the first is the discussion about, and I think it was said that this is an omission, not talking about transport, climate resilience, retrofitting, housing and such. Just to be clear, what we would do with answering the exam question would be set by the government. And in any exam, if you go in and you answer a different question, you're not going to pass. All those issues come later. The exam question was about the number and the size and the model of unitary local government in Norfolk. So all of that stuff will come later. It's not being busy. It's just we're at a different stage of the process. Around the two and the three and the numbers and the size. So Jim McMahon has made it very, very clear that the minimum size is about three hundred and fifty thousand on population, using population projections over the life of the local plan. So on that basis, the three unitaries proposed for Norfolk are about three hundred thousand each at the moment, rising to circa three hundred and fifty, just under, by the end of that period. It's important. It means that they're roughly the same size. They're roughly equal. And let's not forget, within the mayor of authority, Suffolk are going for three unitaries. So Norfolk and Suffolk need an equal number of seats around that table. If Suffolk have three and we only have two, they're disadvantaged, and that's really important to remember. The other issue is, of course, if you had an eastern and west split, you would end up with Greater Yarmouth and Norwich in the same unitary. As has been said, West Norfolk would have Kings Lynn. I think Greater Yarmouth would be greatly disadvantaged by that. I think the attractor would be Norwich. And also, that would create a power imbalance within the six unitaries across Norfolk and Suffolk. I think also, there's a fundamental point when we talk about having two unitaries, Martin just has raised. The fundamental argument we're using is that the urban area needs to manage its own affairs and the rural areas need to manage their own affairs. And that's the most effective way of governing. To those who are concerned about our housing stock, I mean, of course, we can't constrain the unitary when it's formed. We can't, as Norwich City Council now, constrain what they might do. So the surefire way of avoiding the threat is to go for the two or the single unitary model. As you say, Martin, it might be harmful to rural conservatives. That puts our housing stock at risk. So I think that's a major disadvantage of that. Consultation, yeah, absolutely. Look, we set the timescale for this, the government did. And once again, you have to work within what you're given and get the best out of it. But again, at this stage, we are not making the final decision. We're asking government whether or not they support our model for us to do further work on. And at that point, that's the point where we'll start feeding all these much more detailed issues in, including proper consultation, which is already planned. And we intend to do that with the public. There was a comment that the paper is driven by economic growth for its own sake. I disagree completely. What I would say is, the government asked us to respond to six criteria. And also, we know that the government has ambitious economic growth ambitions. And there is a purpose to that, it's not for its own sake, it's to create wealth so that we can improve people's lives and invest in public services. And our submission plays into that by demonstrating how a unitary over Norwich could generate more economic growth than any other model. And that's another way of answering the exam question and making sure we get the outcome that we want when this data goes before ministers. So I hope that's answered some of those questions. What I do want to say, though, I'm really pleased to hear the widespread support for this three-unitary model for within the chamber. That's really, really pleasing, because it is going to be the best of Norwich and for the rest of the county. We will manage our affairs, we'll leave the rural areas to manage their affairs. But we will come together and work together. And I think it's interesting that when you talk about disaggregation of services, for example, that doesn't necessarily need to happen. You could actually have services provided across the county on behalf of three unitaries, but we commission independently. There are many, many different models you could use, which we could look at. No decisions have been made yet. And the final thing I wanted to say is, there is absolutely no reason, and we've talked about this, absolutely no reason I'm aware of, why unparished areas in the current city council area could not be parished. That is something which, as I understand it, we could discuss. And if we wanted to introduce that to ensure better level of democracy and community engagement, that's a conversation we can have, and that's most definitely on the table. So thank you, everybody, it's been a great debate. Thank you, James, for your procedural points, which has enabled us to have a free-flow debate, which is unusual, but very healthy. And I commend this report to you for the interest of this city going forward, the Greater Norwich urban area. This is a historic moment in the history of the city.
We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? I confirm the item has been carried. We now move on to questions to Cabinet members. There are four questions from members of the council to Cabinet members, of which notice has been given in accordance with the provisions of Part Three of the Constitution. Copy will be available on the council's website. Members who have asked questions are permitted to put a supplementary question to the Cabinet member. Question one, Councilor Harley, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor, I do. How will the council ensure appropriate support for annual square trade deals during the forthcoming redevelopment?
Councilor Harley, would you like to reply?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I can confirm we've been working with consultants to understand trade us needs. And we hope to be in a position to share designs for the new meanwhile used box park in early April.
Thank you, Councilor Harper. Councilor Mike Sands, do you have a supplementary question?
No, Lord Mayor, I thank the Cabinet member for your response, but I have no supplementary.
Thank you. Councilor Galvin, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes, I do. Thank you for the answer, Councilor Giles. I just wanted to ask, it's not really, I don't think it's answered the question, because I said what kind of influence we engaged in. So I'd like to ask, if we haven't actually engaged in any influence, because you haven't steadily here, who's developing, who's drafting the response that you speak of? And can we see it, please, at council? Thank you.
Councilor Giles to reply.
Hi, sorry, my mic wasn't working. Thank you. So, I mean, I spoke to partner agencies, including Martin Tom, yesterday. And I've spoken to officers who are actively involved in working in partnership with the VAS. In terms of our consultation response, that would be drafted in due course following the outcomes of tonight's council meeting. I'm happy to share that consultation response with other councillors, other parties. I've also suggested to partner agencies that we align on key points we want to make in our consultation response.
Thank you, Councilor Giles. As Councilor Worley has sent apologies, there will be no supplementary question. Item six, pay policy statement. I call upon Councilor Kendrick to move item six.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Well, I shall be brief, as I obviously realise the time. And I think we could be looking at the gap between the top pay and the bottom pay. It's only six to one. Now, indeed, many level authorities can be twenty to one. And if private companies can be three hundred to one. However, I do have received consultations from the Green Group, and I do accept that the Cabinet will prepare to reexamine this issue and possibly introduce a formal policy in regards to the pay ratios. But obviously, that would need to be supported by a report, I think, comments from officers. So I hope that is acceptable to the Green Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kendrick. I call upon Councilor Giles to second the item.
Thanks, I'll formally second your reserve right to speak.
Councilor Hopner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking officers for their work on the pay policy statement, which is an important instrument for monitoring pay as well as pay inequalities within the council. I'd like to follow by reiterating the concerns we raised at the last council meeting about the massive real jobs, pay cuts, local government workers have suffered over the past decade, and the need for central government to properly fund the local pay rise. So I hope Cabinet will pick up this important matter swiftly and call on central government to make additional funding available to pay local government workers fairly, as requested by the local government pay motion we brought to last meeting, but which the Labour preferred to refer to Cabinet, which meant we were not given a chance to debate it or to vote on it. Secondly, it's good to see that we have salaries, that we have salary sacrifice schemes in place for childcare vouchers and for struggling to work. However, other councils, such as, for example, Oxford City Council, go further than that and also offer their employees the option to participate in low carbon car schemes as part of their climate change commitments. So we have raised and suggested this to Cabinet, and I'm glad to have received positive response and so we look forward to seeing a low carbon car scheme for employees implemented soon. Thirdly, it's good to see that pay differences among the councils' workforce have stayed roughly in the same since last year, and they are lower than in some other councils. I'd like to reflect on the pay inequality figures we're looking at in this report, presenting a partial picture, and don't equip us to monitor the biggest potential sources of pay inequality that are outsourcing and aligning to interns. There are many metrics for monitoring the inequalities, advising from the fact that people are working for NCSR, don't get a council pension, nor any other benefits that the council employees enjoy. There are many metrics that are monitoring the pay inequalities, advising on internal pay packages that are being on the record and going good. Yet, these inequalities still matter, and we should do what we can to address them, even if we don't show up in our past statistics. Next, it's brilliant that we're starting monitoring not only gender pay gaps, but also ethnicity and disability pay gaps. And the available data suggests that there are some really issues to address here, not only in terms of boring pay inequalities, but also in terms of the confidence of staff to disclose sensitive information about themselves to the council. So I hope we'll see action on all gaps, the data gaps and the pay gaps, as soon as possible. To end, it's well known that pay inequalities are bad for staff health and wellbeing in rural, and it's great that the Labour group has agreed to our proposition to put a policy in place on maintaining or reaching a specific pay ratio between the highest and lowest paid employees, as we've just told from Councilor Kendrick. So very pleased for that. The Green Party calls for a ten to one pay ratio mandated by law across society that would ensure that the highest paid earner in any organisation receives no more than ten times the amount of the lowest paid to tackle both the scourge of inequality and the crisis of low wages. So I hope Cabinet will agree to a similar maximum pay ratio for this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Wright.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't have anything to add, but we have heard already.
Thank you, Councilor Wright. Councilor Davies.
Yes, same to Councilor Wright, thank you.
Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councilor Giles, do you wish to speak? Councilor Kendrick, would you like to respond?
Thank you for that.
We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? I confirm the item has been carried. Item seven, purpose-built student accommodation supplementary planning document. I call upon Councilor Stunard to move item seven.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is the same report as came to SGP and Cabinet, so it's already had extensive scrutiny. So I'll keep my comments brief. Norwich has excellent higher education facilities, including UEA and the University of the Arts. These have been expanded due to their continuing success. Students have traditionally been housed on campus or in halls of residence or HMOs. However, since 2019, a significant amount of purpose-built student accommodation has been delivered, mainly by the private sector. There is a 2019 planning guidance note which is now out of date. It was therefore considered necessary to update the evidence base and the guidance. This is included in assessment of the likely future demand for student accommodation in the city. The outcome is that it is therefore anticipated that the current stock and current pipeline of purpose-built student accommodation in Norwich will comfortably meet the student demand up until 2038, 39. I move.
I call upon Councilor Hampton to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally seconded, and so does Wright speak.
Councilor Schmierer.
Yes, thank you very much. This is an issue that is both close to my heart and close to the residents of Manfred Park, given the fact that we, over the last decade, have now seen a sort of steady conveyor belt of PBSAs, that purpose-built student accommodation, be applied for. And in the city centre, we've had a couple on Duke Street, we've had one on Surrey Street, we've had the conversion of St Chris's House, we've had the air rights even over a car park, and, well, it used to be Toys R Us on Westwick Street, and more come to us, some of which were vehemently opposed by residents, some of which were treated with largely ambivalence and sometimes even support. But the fact that we didn't have a strategy on this for many years was quite concerning. So I was really delighted when in 2019 it was brought forward. And obviously, this now needs to be updated. So I'm really supportive that it is going to be consulted on, and I look forward to seeing the results of that consultation and the inaction of this PBSA strategy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Schmierer. Councilor Lubbock.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank the officers for their work on this very detailed draft supplementary planning document. It's an important piece of planning guidance which supports the city's economy in ensuring that students have a range of good quality accommodation at affordable rents in sustainable locations. It's important that, as a city, we give students a good experience of living in Norwich so they can enjoy their university experience, contribute to the economy of the city, and hopefully decide to remain here once their studies are complete. The document aims to deal with the number of PBSA bases required, the quality and affordability of accommodation, and also ensuring that the locations are sustainable. The most difficult aspect is the ability to predict future demand. As recent years have testified, when governments place restrictions on overseas students and their families, for example, the demand for accommodation greatly decreases. Likewise, the rise in the cost of living has meant students are choosing universities near to home where they can continue to live at home and attend on a daily or perhaps weekly basis. Future prediction is difficult. With too much accommodation leading to under occupancy, not only do students suffer from a lack of vitality and facilities in their accommodation, but providers suffer, such as the UEA is experiencing at the moment, with vacancies in their halls leading to a drop in revenue. Although there is a presumption for a steady rise in student numbers up to 2038, there is no certainty. I believe the establishment of a PBSA working group has greatly helped with the formation of this document and will continue to do so with regular meetings to collate and share information to provide an accurate response to the changing high level of student accommodation. I look forward to seeing the responses from the consultation to this important planning document, and again, commend the officers for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lubbock. Councilor Davies.
Thank you, I agree, I'm heartily with Councilor Lubbock on this. I would just like to add, if we need more purpose-built student accommodation at any time in the future, it should be built by Norwich City Council. It should ensure fair rents, capped local housing allowance in order to prioritise Norwich students over corporate properties. That's something I'd like to have considered in the future if the need arises. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Davies. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councilor Jones.
I really welcome having clarity on this, because I think it's important to understand this, it's not just about the purpose-built student accommodation, but how this interacts with other housing stock in the city. Particularly as a council representing university ward, there is an impact on purpose-built student accommodation impacting on the conversion of houses into HMOs. Whilst there is a difference in affordability, I think that has been some benefits from some of the increase in purpose-built student accommodation in terms of decreasing that pressure. And it's a careful balance, I think something we need to keep very carefully reviewed, because it impacts different parts of the city differently, and we have to keep an overview of all different areas of the city of how that has an impact.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Stunard, would you like to respond?
I would thank you, everybody, for your contributions, and I'm not going to go further to add, so I move.
We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? I confirm the item has been carried. Treasury Management, 2024/25 quarter three review. I call upon Councilor Kendrick to move item eight.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Well, this report was extensively reviewed at the Treasury Management Committee, and I think it shows the strength of our Treasury Management strategy. As I say, I recently attended a London Government Association conference, and there are many councils in this country who are in a stronger financial position as ourselves. Now, if you may perhaps indulge me, Lord Mayor, the last report I shall give as Cabinet member for resources, I have been in that role for nine years, and I'm sure all you, a lot of people were grateful by last report, but not as grateful as me. It's been great fun, and can I thank the financial, which is obviously Alistair's here, but I was pretty possessive before, the sterling work they have done. But I think it has come to a point in life where it is time to hand over to a younger generation, and what young talent we have here. And I won't name them, because the councillors like Councilor Dry and Councilor Stunard will resent that I didn't call them younger. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Kendrick. I call upon Councilor Ward to second the item.
Oh, he's second, Lord Mayor, who's ever right.
Councilor Hopner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to say again that I thank the officers for their work on the governance report. I'd like to prove it, but I'd like to offer some good for such as I've got forward. We now have thirty million worth of investments placed in the standard of the costs, which is merely for the auto investment and street lights, not in the industry here. That is a regret and a promising, for the losing of the co-ten share of our investments still likely to fund things, however, residents wouldn't, as to fund including the expansion of our so far. I understand that our Treasury advisers are monitoring the market for new opportunities that might advise to invest safely and profitably, as well as ethically and sustainably. But if we can't create these opportunities ourselves, though, the higher education sector is currently demonstrating how this can be done. Seventy-five universities and colleges led by the University of Cambridge came together just over two years ago to pull their collective weight to create a market for cash products for colleges and universities that do not contribute to the financing of fossil fuel expansion. While the Arnhem and the Superbath universities, many universities actually have a daumen funds, whose size is quite similar to our investment, several tens of thousands of pounds, or hundreds of thousands. These universities and colleges have been discussing the expectations with banks and asset managers and have prepared to collect and move their money to those providers who meet their demands. These negotiations have been a strong, strong success for the new funds to launch shortly, and universities to open accounts with financial institutions that screen out fossil fuel expansion for their investment portfolios. So here's a brilliant example that the local government sector can hopefully learn by the launch from different legislation and constraints and the focus on security liquidity in the world, notwithstanding. I understand that the Treasury Management Committee will be exploring potential lessons from the higher education sector experience shortly, and so I hope everyone on the committee will be keen to take these lessons forward to help ensure that soon not only our third, but all our investments are ethically sustainable and free from tenderments with fossil fuel expansion.
Thank you, councillor Hopner. councillor Wright.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd also like to thank the officers for the work that they've done and continue to do on our Treasury Management. I say this often, I think, when we talk on Treasury Management, I really enjoy sitting on the Treasury Management Committee, and it gives an opportunity to get into the detail in a way that we can't when we're debating in this chamber. And so we will, of course, take on board the points that councillor Hopner has just referenced there. And it is always interesting to hear from our Treasury Managers, particularly in their sort of future gaze that they do on interest rates and wonder how accurate they were moving forward, but how much of that future gaze can you do? But no, the proof is in the pudding, the level of returns that our officers have obtained on behalf of the council over the years is to be claimed, so thank you.
councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, in brief, we'd like to support this item and express our thanks to the Treasury Management Officers and Committee, and also the response to councillor Hope's statements. I would hope that some delegation would bring more opportunities to be moving further in that direction, economies of scale, et cetera, so that we can be looking more into our policy framework in terms of being more climate conscious, fairer, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oliver. Does any other councillor wish to speak? councillor Kendrick, would you like to? councillor Stunard.
Yeah, I should just respond to councillor Kendrick's comments a while ago, as this is his last council meeting as effectively the portfolio holder for finance, a fellow councillor of mine as well, and a fellow pensioner as well. We just qualified, I think I qualified on the fourteenth of February, I haven't had my first hearing yet, I've got my bus pass as well, you qualified in January, he qualifies in March?
May.
May, okay, so yeah, we're all the same vintage. The baby of the group. Anyway, full turn sixty-six this year. So yeah, took nine years with the portfolio. I held it for you, I hope you received it in a good state and in good order. The other thing that we're going to miss, that we've really enjoyed over the last nine years, is your speeches, your rousing speeches, which often raise a smile. So we wish you well as Lord Mayor, chairing the meetings next year, and thank you very much for nine years of excellent service because the finances of this council are very strong, as we keep hearing, and Paul has been stewarding that for almost a decade, so thank you, Paul.
Thank you, councillor Stunard. councillor Kendrick, would you like to respond?
I can only just thank the members for what has been said, but I won't speak beyond the grave, I'll be just down the corridor.
We now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions. I can confirm the item has been carried. Funding approval for two environmental projects. The government has lifted the embargo on the information in this report, so this item will be discussed in public. I call upon councillor Hampton to move item eleven.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Recently, we received work from DESNERS, the Department of Energy Security and Net Zero, that we've been successful in two funding bids we've made to the Warm Homes Social Housing Fund and to the Warm Homes Local Grant, as has been alluded to until the past few days. This was embargoed, so we've considered this at Cabinet, and now it's important to us just in time to be able to do it publicly, have that public debate and discussion if needs be. These homes are tenacred with delivery of energy efficiency improvements to social homes and private homes respectively. With regards to the Warm Homes Labour Grant, we've been awarded over £4.7 million to deliver energy efficiency improvements to 330 private sector homes. We've got to £12,400 available for each victim to improve energy efficiency, and over £15,000 for low-carb heating solutions such as heat pumps. This money applies to private rental properties as well as owner-occupied, and will be used to support those in energy efficient homes, so EPC rating D to G, who have either annual household gross income of less than £36,000, or on specific means tested benefits such as housing benefit, income based GSA, ESA, income support, pension credit, and universal credit, or reliving a deprived postcode in the city. And on the award from the Warm Homes Social Housing Fund, which was formerly the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund, but was rebranded by the new coming Labour Government, we've been allocated £12 million, and the council will be contributing further £10.5 million to bring the project total to over £22.5 million. This is expected to deliver 1,400 solar photovoltaic systems, 140 air source heat pumps, and a ground source heat pump system for 24 dwellings. We have previously been successful in obtaining Social Housing Decarbonisation funding under the last government in previous waves of this, so wave one back in 2022, and then wave two point two, roughly this time last year. But for this year's allocation perspective, the project total, so including co-funding from the council for the previous waves, was £1.25 million for wave one, £5.1 million for wave two point two. So to now be looking at project total for £22.5 million is real progress, really positive and really upscale to a number of residents who will get to benefit from these works. These projects are starting to commence in three years from April. Council tenants will be contacted directly about any potential works to their property, and we will shortly launch a process for those who think they may be eligible for the private scheme to register interest or also consign those people who think will be eligible. And we will, of course, be working closely with groups like Al Power and North Football Homes to get word out to communities, and especially to traditionally harder to reach but likely eligible residents, to ensure strong uptake among those who need it most. So for two projects, this paper outlines will drive for all over £27 million of upgrades for Norwich homes to make them warmer, healthier, and safer, while at the same time reducing energy bills for residents and cutting carbon emissions, helping us get closer to meeting our net zero targets in an equitable manner. They can also be a really valuable boost to investment into the local retrofit sector, strengthening supply chain, supporting green jobs, and helping to instill confidence in the market. As an administration, we've consistently emphasised how our priority is always going to be climate action, but delivers carbon reduction while also delivering immediate social and economic benefits to residents and communities, and this latest tranche of works is going to optimize that again. Our ready adopted Sustainable Warm Stress View sets out principles of how we decarbonise in a socially just manner, making sure nothing we do exacerbates people's financial situation, but rather wherever possible assists it. And our forthcoming Climate Responsive Norwich Programme will consolidate existing ongoing work around citywide retrofit, as well as setting out a framework for how we can variably lead, coordinate, and influence our retrofit finance skills, training, and delivery with partners to go further still whilst still keeping these principles at heart. So this paper before us tonight seeks our approval to delegate authority to the Chief Finance Officer in consultation with the Cabinet Member for an open and modern council, that's councillor Kendrick for now, to increase the general fund capital programme and HRI capital programme according to the amounts that I set out and set out over the three years in this paper. As I've already said, these are words which will make a real tangible difference to over a thousand city residents. So I really hope we can pass this paper tonight and get the ball rolling on these schemes. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. I call upon councillor Jones to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Really excited that we're able to bring this forward. I think anyone who's read the HRI business plan will see the significant cost and challenge that we've got in terms of meeting net zero, but also how we are committed to that mix of threats throughout the business plan. Grants like this will make a significant difference to us in being able to do that because when we're looking at that long-term spending, it's a real challenge, but actually it's exciting. And I think looking at the range of opportunities we've got, the things that we can, different approaches you can take with different accommodation, it's going to be interesting getting forward. Just really excited that we've got these opportunities that have measurable difference to people's lives. It's not just talking about it in an abstract sense, it's talking about this impacts people's bills, this impacts the money in their pocket and the quality of their home and their health. And these things are absolutely key to our residents, so really excited and hope to have everyone's support tonight.
Thank you, councillor Jones. councillor Osborne.
Thank you. And it's really good to see, I feel, what councillor Hampton and councillor Jones have said, obviously, retrofitting, particularly in sort of impact, as I said, the greens have been pushing for for a long time, so it's good to see that this money has come through and it's one in a long line of funding that Norwich City Council's obtained by various ways, for the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund. I'll make a couple of general points. One is that it's not enough. The funding for the warmer to lower brands for the private sector is about 25% across councils. Generally, it's like councils got about 25% of what they bid for from the government. So I'm really hoping that we're going to see an improvement from the Labour Government to expect a spring statement next week, adding to the wall note that in the summer, when they shouldn't be committing to greater funding for this, because there's no way we're going to make meet net zero targets or address fuel quality improvement, and it's without that. The second is that alongside this, I hope to see engagement programme, public engagement programme, I know that we're going to be reaching out to tenants individually, but particularly around the heat pumps, there's a lot of misinformation around heat pumps. People need to understand how they work, understand what they're going to be expecting, and that needs to come through this as well. I'll also ask councillor Hampton, I think it's straight to Cabinet as well, but the Social Housing Fund, we're talking about 164 heat pump connections in the next three years at council last year, and they said that the council will be aiming for 500 heat pump installations a year in social housing, well, council housing, from this year on. This is funding, what, 55 heat pump installations each year over the next three years. So where's the funding for the other 450 going to come from? I have a good, I think, plan with reports like this, and anything related to decarbonisation, actually to have a clarification of what our targets are and how we are progressing towards those, because this isn't a criticism, but we're not on track for where we need to be, want to be at half of home today, heat pumps by 2040, which is what the Climate Change Committee said a couple of weeks ago, then we need to be ramping up progress a lot faster than we are currently. And what's not clear from here is how close we are to that, how far off we are, how we're going to make up the gap.
Thank you, councillor Osborne. councillor Wright.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. It's really good to be able to talk about this item in public this evening, because it's a really, it's a really good piece of news. And I kind of get what councillor Osborne is saying in the fact that it's not enough, but actually for those people who are having this work done, that's those savings on fuel bills and potentially living in a warmer property, that's, yeah, that's really important to them. So I guess whilst, from a sort of more abstract perspective, we want to do more, actually the stuff that's going to be done to benefit some people is better than not doing anything, will make a real important difference to their lives, so really pleased that this is going to happen and will sort of watch with interest as the rollout goes ahead.
Thank you, councillor Wright. councillor Davies.
Yes, thank you. In brief, this funding is really good news. I'd like to thank officers, especially considering the quick timeframe in getting this paper together after the funding was granted, so thank you. Good news.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Does any other councillor wish to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was just interested in asking, for the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund, it mentions that the fund requires a 50% match funding, and as we received £5 million less than intended from government, we must have earmarked that £5 million ready to match it. So I was just going to encourage the Labour Cabinet, if they wouldn't, to continue to put that £5 million towards it, because the money should be aside, ready to match bid, otherwise we didn't have access to that money. The second thing I wanted to mention is that the council does have a history of budgeting high when it comes to this, and successfully gaining money and delivering low. So just one example, so this spreadsheet we've got multiple things, is that there was around £2.5 million budgeted across five years for solar thermal and PV, and yet every year, only 50% of that was delivered.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. councillor Hampton, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm really pleased to hear there's more consensus across the chamber about how this is really positive news for both the council and the city. To just come back on a couple of points briefly, with regards to it's not enough, firstly, I want to mirror councillor Wright's comments on how, actually, for each household and each resident, this effect, it can be really transformative, all homes, cutting bills, the things that people will see in the here and now of their lives when these measures are delivered, and of course with the benefits that we can measure it in terms of emissions as well. Of course, we want to do more, and as I've already demonstrated, actually, in this way we will be doing vastly more than we have been able to, because more government money has come through, as councillor Osborne said, to the Warm Homes Plan, over someone we'll certainly be one to watch. In terms of public engagement, again, I think I already covered, as the report covers to an extent, that we are very much putting plans in place to enhance communication, to get out into communities, make use of the groups and networks who are already doing a really good job of that, and some of the learning from previous waves where it has been very challenging, both naturally in reaching hard-to-reach people, but also with some of the restrictions that were previously in place about how we were allowed to communicate with residents, and a lot of learning and kind of rethinking has gone on in that regard. I mentioned briefly Al Power earlier, we do a lot of engagement, not just with, you know, reaching people and encouraging them to apply, but it's quite hands-on as well with that cohort who, heat pumps, et cetera, may be a little bit more able to come forward and ask for that help. Nine Homes as well, there's also some really good learning there with regards to getting people settled into new clean heating systems, which are completely new to a lot of those households. With regards to measuring process, we have KPIs for installation of energy efficiency measures which are due to be and are being reviewed, so that's points that will be picked up within that. due to be and are being reviewed. So that's points that will be picked up within that process. And with regards to the H R I body points, I'm personally not meant to come without having a discussion with councillor Jones. I would not want to commit anything without doing so. But as I say, I can obviously, it is really positive news for the city and I hope we can pass this today and get going.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? I can confirm the items being carried and invite councillor Oliver back into the chamber. We now move on to motion nine A, Youth Mobility Scheme between the UK and the EU. I call upon councillor Wright to move motion nine A.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's never been a more important time to advocate for the establishment of a youth mobility scheme between the United Kingdom and the European Union. This motion is not just a policy proposal, it's a vision for the future of our young people and our nation. We believe the opportunities for the young people to travel, study and work abroad are essential for fostering cultural exchange, personal development and economic growth. The Youth Mobility Scheme between the UK and the EU will offer structured opportunities for young people to gain international experience and develop skills valuable for their personal and professional futures. Norwich alone, according to the twenty twenty one census, forty eight thousand eight hundred fourteen young people aged between eighteen and thirty five, which is thirty three point nine one per cent of the total population, would be eligible to benefit from this scheme. The UK previously benefited from the EU's Erasmus Plus programme, which supported youth mobility and exchange. Prior to Brexit, our young people were able to freely travel between member states and the wider European economic area to live, work or study without time limits. However, since the UK's departure from the EU, young people in Norwich and across the UK face increased barriers to living, working and studying in European countries. Limits of opportunities that were previously available. We now have a ninety day limit on time we can spend in European countries without my visa and young people have been disproportionately impacted by these restrictions. The Liberal Democrats have always championed the cause of youth mobility. We believe that a new agreement on youth mobility between the UK and our European neighbours is just common sense to help young people work and travel around the continent. Young people already have had the chance to use similar schemes from many other countries across the globe, such as Australia and Japan. There's simply no reason why we shouldn't look to expand into our European neighbours, which will offer an amazing opportunities for generations to come. Local businesses, especially those in hospitality, would also benefit from the extra temporary personnel offered by young people across the EU taking advantage of the scheme. The Youth Mobility Scheme will offer British businesses an excellent opportunity to address staffing shortages by welcoming young people from the EU countries for a limited period, bringing fresh talent and energy to our workforce. This motion asks the council to publicly endorse the principle of benefits and establishment of youth mobility scheme between the UK and the EU and to ask our local MPs to continue doing the same. We asked the group leaders, one to the Secretary of State for Common and Rising Development Affairs and the Secretary of Education, urging them to ensure that backing such a scheme is the core of the future discussions with the EU as the UK works to reset its relationship with the bloc. In conclusion, the Liberal Democrats are committed to fixing our broken relationship with Europe and pushing for the fair deal young people deserve. They're to seize this opportunity to create a brighter future for our young people, our businesses and our nation. Together, we can make the youth mobility scheme a reality and pave the way for a more connected and prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wright. I call upon councillor Ackroyd to second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not going to say much, but I just want to add to what councillor Wright has said. That as a year six teacher, I took part in the Commendatus Project, which was an EU educational project and part of Erasmus Plus. The core of the Commendatus Programme, accounting for three quarters of its budget, is the creation of partnerships between local schools across the countries involved. For us, it involved visits to our partner schools in Spain and Poland and subsequently acting as hosts to them back in Norwich. It was a totally brilliant scheme with ten and eleven year old pupils. And I saw firsthand the benefits of pupils in developing self esteem, widening friendships and horizons and learning about other cultures and learning other languages. It was such a huge learning curve for all of us and went over and above what we would have gained as tourists in those countries. As a teacher too, it was such a good opportunity to learn from comparing our practice and reflecting on our own practice with teachers from our partner schools. So I think, you know, mobility, youth mobility is so important. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ackroyd. Councillor Giles?
I think you've called the wrong person, Lord Mayor.
The group spokesperson?
Yeah, no, I didn't know. I was... Sorry, I had absolutely no idea I was responding. But we are voting in favour of this motion tonight and thank you to the Liberal Democrat group for bringing it. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor Champion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a group, we are entirely supportive of this. When the UK left the European Union, we left so much more than just an overarching union. Among those things was Erasmus Plus, that is an initiative funded by the EU and supported the aims of education, training and development. We might normally refer to Erasmus as just supporting exchange programmes and study abroad, but it was so much more than that. There was opportunities for digital academies, for adult learning. And so it was more than just university students. And this has already been alluded to. Many schools were involved with teachers and students. At the time of Brexit, I was working in a high school. Prior to Brexit, I had observed many students having opportunities afforded to them. And then post Brexit, they evaporated. In the year two thousand, when the UK joined, you know, sorry, in twenty twenty, which was the last year that the UK was part of Erasmus, sixty thousand participants from the UK benefited from Erasmus. And that was after thirty three years of the UK being part of this scheme. And as I say, it benefited so many people from so many different walks of life that it's really important to highlight. And it was unfortunate earlier in the year when we saw that Labour seemed unwilling to, you know, to rejoin and get back on board. And it is worth highlighting that in opinion polls which have been done by Politico and other groups, that over fifty per cent of the British public are in support of, you know, the UK rejoining things like Erasmus. And only fifteen per cent are against, the rest are, you know, don't hold an opinion. And so this is, you know, people are very supportive of this. I'm glad that there will be support across the chamber for this motion, which is greatly valued and very important, I feel. And I really hope that the government will listen to district councils such as us and our request, which goes alongside many other organisations making this request to support young people and encourage internationalism, which is really, really important now in a time of increasing nationalism and national self interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Champion. Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We'll be supporting the motion and echo what's already been said. Just wanted to note as well that it's a shame the young people who are currently not about this opportunity of free travel weren't the ones that were able to vote against Brexit back in twenty sixteen.
Thank you, councillor Oliver. Does any of the councillors wish to speak? Councillor Maguire?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Really have knowledge from councillor Ackroyd when you see the effects of Erasmus on students. The university I taught at had a really strong Erasmus programme. And as councillor Champion said, one of the many other things that happened will be joint courses taught across three countries with modules taught in each. Students having to travel to those countries and learning that language. The effect on those students is just wonderful. You see it and that will carry on for the rest of their lives. I managed to go and teach at the Techno University in Bordeaux and another time at the TEANO in the Netherlands, again, as part of an exchange programme. One word of caution, well not caution, but something we must remember. And that is sitting on the Erasmus programmes that I was involved in. Many of the exchanges were from other countries to the UK. Not so many UK students had the confidence to go forward. And at the heart of that problem was the language law. And that's down to the way we've treated language teaching in this country for many years. And perhaps the future, a greater Norwich as an educational authority, might consider putting languages back on the main curriculum and giving that knowledge and confidence to that next generation so that they can be truly international. One of the things I'd like to say very quickly is it's so cheap as soft power and exchange. The inference that diplomacy that comes about from Erasmus, from these exchanges, again, it'll last much longer. So I will be very pleased to vote for this. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maguire. Councillor Driver?
Yes, thank you. I think this is an excellent motion as well. Somebody like me, I've gone to France all the time, I wish I could, if I was twenty six instead of sixty six, come home and use it myself. And end up going for more than ninety days a year, which I would really enjoy when I retire. But the younger people just need to go to these countries to learn and get their culture and feel what it's like. And you can't do that all of the week, or a few or two weeks. You need to be there for a few months and really take it in the culture and the language and the way people live in France, Germany, Denmark. I mean, they're all high end for even if people have a cost really and to take in their experiences to do it. I was a bit surprised. I don't know how this is a a bit at the end where I asked for all the people to go to the... I thought it was very good, so they just leave it. So there'd be four people going to the Secretary of State for one. I was quite clever how you got that in this year. I thought it was amazing that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Driver. Councillor Hampton?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry for the confusion about who was going to be responding. When we had our group meeting to try and sort that out, we landed on either me or Adam as one of the group members within the age bracket who might be affected by this. And we well, I've actually aged out of it since last week, but nonetheless. Yeah, we did land on this. I'll just do a condensed version of some of what I was going to say, a lot of which has been covered. And obviously, the benefits of such a scheme have been outlined very well by councillor Wright and others already, giving young people the right to study, live and work abroad in a structured reciprocal mobility scheme. This is something, as we've said, we'll be supporting. And as councillor Champion have read it to, more than common polling, I think, last year demonstrated that there is strong support across the board as well, not just over fifty per cent of those polled, but over fifty per cent in every constituency, over fifty per cent in all different kind of party voter groups, including over fifty per cent of the form voters. Our polling demonstrated that we'd support such a scheme. As Labour councillors, we would like to see measures to make sure that this opportunity would be accessible to as many young people as possible, including those with disadvantaged backgrounds or who may not have had as many opportunities in life generally. And we do recognise that a youth mobility scheme is only one part of a puzzle of a much bigger picture when it comes to improving opportunity for young people, breaking down social barriers, improving relations with our European neighbours. But we think it's a really good place to start. With regards to the government stance, I think the latest line is that there are no plans, but we would listen to sensible offers or kind of proposals, if that's a word, from the EU, which is, a lot of the schemes that already exist were done in the process of negotiation in a much broader context. So it sounds like we will engage with that process. And as this is something to support, we're certainly happy to add our own to the case that it's something that we should be going for as part of that process. So thank you very much for any promotion, which I look forward to supporting.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. Councillor Samms?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion, I think, is very, very timely. I certainly endorse it fully. As many of you know, Sue and I are both dual nationals and we've enjoyed the ability to work unhindered here across not two countries, but two continents. We've done the Australian thing of two, a fried up combi, if those people know the song I'm referring to. And, and several times, and it really is not just a, and it is an absolute necessity that we give our young people the opportunity to work and play in Europe. And should this go ahead, and certainly it will, and will eventually be adopted by a government, it means also that industry will possibly start to do more work relocation, work swaps for their employees with branches in other countries. I know my son's firm already does that to an extent. So, yeah, I think this is an excellent motion and it will serve to bring Britain that much closer to Europe. I think this will leave Mr Trump spinning somewhat and I think it will leave both Mr Farage and Mr Lowe with their eyes spinning ever faster. So yes, I think, as you say, great motion and well done our Liberal Democrats to bring it to council tonight.
Thank you, councillor Samms. Are there any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Wright, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. A couple of comments, just picking up on councillor Hampton's, I think. As it happened, I would have aged out on moving this motion if I brought it within my first few months of joining this council fifteen years ago. But, and I was reminded that when talking about the sort of study of languages, that I've only got just over two hours left to do Duolingo today. I'll still have my head home. But no, it's been fantastic to hear so much support and it was never in doubt, I think, the level of internationalism that exists within this this council chamber and our sort of view of the world. So thank you very much to colleagues for supporting this this evening.
Thank you, councillor Wright. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against abstentions? I can confirm the item has been carried. As we now pass the two hour mark, I need to ask if any of the remaining...
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Galvey?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry to interrupt. Can I move under the Constitution seventy two C to change the order of business and swap nine B with nine C? And this is because of the important nature of nine C being a contemporary motion and I've asked in advance the proposer of nine B and A. Is that okay? It's one of my, the walking centre in the consultations open at the moment and we'll be closing later. That's what I propose.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to insist, we were just going to see if we could take anything unopposed. So 9b might be unopposed. So are you okay to hold that thought, to just check? And then we'll have a short break and go into 9c.
So as we have gone past the two-hour mark, I have to ask if any of the remaining business can be unopposed.
9b.
9b? 9c?
Sorry, are you opposing or opposing?
If you're opposing.
Opposing? 9c? No, 9b, sorry.
Yes, yeah. We'll take a ten-minute break.
Sorry? So we've accepted that 9b is being taken unopposed. We are moving straight to 9c now.
Is that 9c as originally on agenda?
As originally on agenda. As amended.
Do we just carry on with the meeting?
No, we need to take a ten-minute break. Time. 9c, motion Norwich Walking Centre. An amendment has been received from councillor Giles as councillor Giles is amending his own motion. This will form part of a substantive motion. I call upon councillor Giles to move motion 9c as amended.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Labour administration is bringing this motion tonight to state our support for the continuation of the existing service at the Norwich Walking Centre and the vulnerable adult service inclusion hub on Westwood Street. These are critical services greatly valued by patients and must be protected. Our Labour government has a mission to build an NHS fit for the future, which is there when people need it. Upon entering office, the government commissioned Lord Darzi to undertake a rapid investigation into the state of the NHS. The Darzi review found that the percentage of the NHS budget devoted to primary care had reduced by 25% between 2009 and 2021. This is despite research on the NHS Confederation suggesting that every £1 invested in primary care yields £14 for the economy. The GP patient survey reveals that patient satisfaction levels with general practice have declined from 80% in 2010 to only 34.2% in 2023. A majority of the respondents to the government's Change NHS Consultation listed access to primary care as a top-three priority. And a recent poll by the Health Foundation found that 38% of patients regarded access to primary care as their number-one priority. This administration welcomed the government's increased annual funding for primary care by 7.2%, higher than the 5.8% increase for secondary care. We also welcomed that the government and the BMA have reached agreement on the GP contract for the first time in four years, settling the industrial action under the previous government. Primary care and resilience is set out as a key ambition in the Northwick and Waverley ICB's joint thought plan. Sustained investment in primary care is critical to meeting this key ambition. The much anticipated left shift in healthcare needed to match the government's key aims, to move from hospital to community and sickness to prevention, are dependent on investment in primary care. We hope that the efficiency savings generated by the abolition of NHS England and the slimming down of ICBs can be reinvested back into making this left shift a reality. While we accept there are pressures in primary care across Northwick and Waverley outside Norwich, the ICS's Health Inequalities Strategic Framework for Action commits the ICS to the guiding principle of proportionate universalism. 40% of residents in Norwich live in the top 20% deprived areas, according to the Index of Multiple Deprivation, residing in Northwick and Waverley ICS core 20 areas to combat health inequalities. By contrast, only 16% of residents across the whole of Northwick and Waverley live in core 20 areas. As such, we believe there is a strong argument that as a hotspot for health inequalities, Norwich requires additional primary care provision in the form of the walking centre under the ICS's guiding principle of proportionate universalism. With regards to the vulnerable adult service inclusion hub, while this is a recommended change of delivery model rather than efficiency saving, following engagement with partner agencies, we believe this proposal is unwise. While we appreciate there are pressures elsewhere in the county lacking services, Norwich is a flow city for rough sleepers, with higher rates of plus-inclusion health groups reliant on the vulnerable adult service for provision of healthcare. Given the complex and sometimes chaotic nature of many of these patients' needs, an outreach model would be less accessible to their needs than the current fixed central hub in Norwich City Centre. This motion calls on us to ask the ICB to illustrate that any changes in service provision will not reduce access to primary care for locally identified plus-inclusion health groups, including asylum seekers and refugees, those engaged in the criminal justice system, those experiencing homelessness, and sex workers and exploited women. It is vital these groups of patients get access to the services they need. The Norwich Labour Party and our MPs took the lead before in campaigning to save these services, and they will seek to do so again. I would encourage all councillors to support the motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. I call upon councillor Jones to second the motion.
Seconding reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Galvin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Giles, for bringing this motion. There are really very many important points that we need to be discussing in it. Most important of all is the health of people in Norwich, especially those most vulnerable, as you say. So I'm glad that having been amended several times up to the deadline last bit of the evening by you, it's been rewritten, the motion, to include the vulnerable adult service and other health inclusion points following the motion, which give it much more substance than the original. So thank you for that. But they do not go far enough, in my estimation. You'll notice that several kiosks in the green motion are still not included. The green motion has been ruled out of order. My attempt to amend the motion before us to include those points have, late in the day, also been ruled out in technicality at the behest of the Labour Group. I've struggled in the past to get questions accepted on this topic, often being told that it was nothing to do with the city council. Two years ago, when the service provider collapsed, and we asked for the council to ask for an investigation in that, the Labour Group voted against this. The council has subsequently sat on its hands and done nothing much more about it. The two key points that are not going to be talked about are, firstly, how did we get to a situation where the most vulnerable are targeted for cuts by the service providers? How was it that when the ICB were looking to make savings, they lighted on the walking centre, the outlier service, and of all things, the service that cares for people most at risk, most in need and most let down in our city, the vulnerable adult service? Secondly, why is there a black hole in the budget of the conditions, the ICB? I was motivated to look into this two years ago by at least eight different whistleblowers who came to me individually with their concerns about the mismanagement of One Norwich and conflicts of interest within it and the ICB. The former provider of the service. Perhaps naively, I thought that this council would be interested in finding out what had gone wrong in order to protect our citizens. I was surprised to find myself blocked time and again. Today's another example. You'll note in the motion, which is in your papers, that I shared a timeline of events, and I would refer you to them for the details for that timeline. I won't go through it here because there isn't time. I'd also refer you to a very important ask, which hasn't been taken, for changes in provision to be evidence-based. That also has not been allowed. An urgent independent inquiry into government's management and financial issues with an evaluation of the services and the management of any conflicts of interest is also, it seems, out of the question. And my amendment to bring that into this motion has not been allowed. I speak here because people who are affected most by this don't have a voice. And they would have been impacted if we hadn't managed to stand up today and actually get that into the motion. But they will still be impacted if proposed changes go ahead. And none of the investigations that I've asked for seem acceptable to this administration. You've gone out of your way to block them for every request. I don't want to think that this is because the leader of the Labour Group was Financial Director of One Norwich in the two years up to its collapse.
Lord Mayor.
I'm left with no other option.
Point of order.
Glad to say.
A point of order, Lord Mayor. That's unacceptable.
Councillor Sunnard.
That personal comment is unacceptable. It's also the fact that the claim that we'd be blocking discussion, not at all, it wasn't our decision that the amendments were accepted.
Can you wind up your...
You need to keep to the politics and stop making untrue allegations, which are lies.
It's not a lie. I'm glad to say that there is now some kind of investigation going on at the ICB, independent one, and that the HOSK will look at the consultation this week, with the benefit of expertise from clinicians. The people of Norwich, the patients, the nurses and the doctors deserve this, but they have deserved much, much better from us as a council. Thank you.
Councillor Lubbock.
Yes, thank you. I'll be very brief. I mean, the point of the motion is to state what you feel and try and get people to vote in favour of what you say. So it's not a lot of point in me speaking insofar as I completely agree with the motion, and the most important thing is that we do all we can to keep the walking centre open because we know how valuable it is and the impact it might have on the services provided by the hospital. It's common sense, really, and talk to anybody who goes there, they know the value of it. So the important thing is to encourage people to take part in the consultation, to actually know how one does that, and to come together, to speak with one voice that we need to do this urgently. So a little bit of detail about how the public do get involved in the consultation would be helpful. And I completely agree, and as the Democrats, we agree, that we should keep the walking centre open, as we did say and do last a year ago. It's such a pity that we're in the same situation again, just a year later, for a service that's so urgently needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Galvin did not lie. It's a shame that we're not actually debating her motion, which was excellently researched and very thorough, and asking the crucial questions of why we're in the same situation as we were two years ago. The walking centre has been a lifeline for countless residents, offering quick non-emergency care to those who might otherwise struggle to access healthcare. Whether it's for minor injuries, infections or just general advice, the walking centre is there when people need it most, but we're at a critical juncture and that's soon is faced to its future. At a time when access to healthcare should be a priority for our government, we're seeing cuts to essential services like the walking centre, making it harder for everyday people to get the care they deserve. But it's not just cuts to local services that are the problem, there's a wider issue at play. The Labour government, despite claiming to be a champion for working people, is directly contributing to the growing health inequalities across the country. Cuts to benefits and vital services have pushed the most vulnerable in our society further into poverty, exacerbating health disparities and making it even harder for those who need care to access it. The government's decision to slash benefits today reduced support for the unemployed and free social worker, left millions struggling to survive, let alone seeking medical help. These cuts don't just hit people in their wallets, they hit them in their health. People on low incomes, disabled people and those with long-term conditions are already at a disadvantage when it comes to health outcomes. They have less access to nutritious food, less opportunity to exercise and are more likely to live in poor housing. By cutting benefits, this government is actively deepening these inequalities. We know the most deprived areas in our communities often suffer from worse health outcomes, chronic conditions, mental health struggles and limited access to healthcare. The closure or reduction in services like the walking centre will only make this worse. For people already struggling with the impact, this loss of accessible timely healthcare is a devastating blow. The walking centre isn't just a convenience, it's a crucial part of the healthcare system, ensuring that people don't have to wait weeks for a GP appointment or overcrowded AZP services with non-emergency issues. It provides a central service to those who may not have the luxury of taking time off work or paying for private healthcare. To take that away is to further marginalise those who are already struggling. In Norwich, we will all, I think in this chamber, continue to stand up for the walking centre and for the people who rely on it. We won't let this vital service slip away. We demand a future where healthcare is accessible to all, where benefits are not slashed in the name of austerity and where people, especially the most vulnerable, are treated with dignity and care they deserve. I'll be supporting this motion.
Councillor Harper.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to start by saying I think it's a shame that this debate has been somewhat hijacked by speeches in favour of a motion that isn't actually in order, that isn't actually on the agenda. So I think that's a bit disappointing. I think people watching this, people at home, you know, maybe watching this, will be wondering why we're airing, you know, kind of old, historic political issues, rather than focusing on the very real threat to the closure of a service that thousands of our residents depend on. I appreciate that some remarks have addressed that point, but a great deal have gone wide of the mark. It's my understanding that the liquidators of One Norwich Practices have conducted an investigation into this matter and have concluded that there was no wrongdoing, and will be publishing their report in the next month. And that information will be in the public domain, and hopefully that will settle once and for all this issue, which, for, you know, I suppose understandable reasons, opposition councillors are trying to make hay with, but I think they'd probably be better to put their own house in order, given that attendance on their benches appears to be so poor. There must be some very important things going on if Green councillors can't turn up to discuss local government reorganisation and can't see out the full meeting. So I hope we can move on from this issue once and for all, and not have to keep rehashing the same debates for council.
Thank you. Councillor Sands.
I do, of course, support the motion fully, but it's a great pity that we don't have a convention, they have Westminster, in which if a minister is named on the floor, they should be informed in advance. And it's a total disrespect by the opposition here to conduct personal attacks during a debate on a serious topic, by having to deplore everything they stand for.
Thank you, Councillor Sands. Councillor Hampton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to briefly come back on the point about amendments. My understanding is that the Green group did not submit their amendments to democratic services and the proposal for motion by the stated deadline of 5pm, as per the constitution. So therefore, they were not blocked at the behest of the Labour group. Same rules apply to all of us. For example, last month, when I said I wanted to make my amendments, I think the Rivers motion, it was swiftly pointed out to me. I had missed the deadline and fallen foul of the same rules. It was not at our behest. You got the process wrong. And it was my mistake last month when I did the same thing. You've just got to own that, unfortunately. The motion councillor Giles put forward, in line with the constitution, makes me the kiosk that will resonate with residents who care about the services. It's focused on the here and now, of how we can work to fight these closures and service changes, which will have a real impact on the city. I don't think the sort of personal attacks that have been made tonight resonate or help this cause whatsoever, but I do really hope everyone will be ultimately supporting this motion tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Hampton. Councillor Galvin.
I have a point of information around the amendment. I just think it might be helpful. So the councillor, mainly, the motion was amended twice, quite late on in the day, despite me being told on Friday I'd have it then, up till about, you know, quite varying the deadline. So I didn't actually know what I could be amending, which is actually not in the spirit of things to do that. That's the problem. And then I was given a dispensation, as you well know, to actually put in my amendment after that. Because if you look at it, if you're going to amend motion, it's very late, and then twice, very close to the deadline, how can anyone ever amend a motion? And secondly, it isn't lies, it's fact, and it's to do with the collapse and the black hole in the money.
A point of information, counsel to that. How councillor Giles amended the motion was constitutional, it is within the constitution. Members have a survey, they fill these processes to do report council, and therefore the constitution underpins it. Do you need to be thinking so we can all be filling that out? I didn't say anything about lies. I said the personal attacks, and I do stand by that at the mark.
Councillor Cowden.
There has been some misunderstanding. Councillor Sunnard has made quite serious accusations of lying in the chamber. Would he like to take the opportunity to either withdraw the accusation or clarify all the lies I've heard?
Yeah, the lies repeated frequently by members of the Green Party are about my role at One Norwich Practices.
Can we move on? Councillor Jones.
Thank you. I suppose I just, the reason I reserve my rights stick was to really want to come back, because I was concerned that it would sink to this, when actually, as a number of colleagues in the chamber have mentioned, it is fundamentally about our walking centre. It is about the most vulnerable people in the city needing a service. It is about saying to our residents, get your voice heard and say this is important. Show how much you need this. I'm sure that almost every single one of us sitting here has used either the walking centre or the outlier service. It is crucial to us, it is crucial to our residents. There is no other issue that we're talking about here. This is about the health of our city. Let's not play political point scoring with it and I get sick as an NHS member of staff when the NHS or anything associated is used as a political football. This is about our residents, and I think every single one of us can say, we know our residents need this, and we should be saying that with one voice, and everything else, put it to one side. I'm sorry if I sound a little bit strong in this, but it's something that means a massive amount to me, but it's the people who don't have a voice, we've got to give them one in terms of their health service. Everything else, put it to one side. This is about the walking centre, this is about those people that need this service, and I hope everyone will vote for it tonight.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Giles, would you like to respond?
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. You know, I think fundamentally, you know, as Beth said, what residents are most interested in is the services that are going to exist at the end of this consultation, and that's what they primarily wish to hear about. In relation to the amendments, I appreciate there was some, you know, could things have been handled better in retrospect? Yes, yes, they could have done. I was only advised that I could amend to the manner I did an hour and a half before the deadline myself. So I originally put forward amendments on, you know, Friday, and then, you know, so there was conflicting advice that went back and forth. I think the matter is now settled, and for future months, you know, we'll know what the position is. But to be clear, you know, the decision around your amendments and the deadline having been missed, that's obviously a decision taken by the monitoring officer, not taken by us as councillors. We shouldn't call her independence into, you know, into the spoon. In relation to our MP, and it's not the topic of this motion, but obviously there was an M H O S K hearing into the matter. The liquidators' office have concluded their investigation and found no wrongdoing, and the Insolvency Service have concluded their investigation into directors' conduct and found no wrongdoing as well. I think it's important to remember that we are not the commissioner or the provider of clinical healthcare services as a district council. You know, our role is very much to focus on, A, the socio-economic determinants of health, and then B, to be a voice of residents in relation to influencing the system. We're not, we're not the commissioner or the provider. In relation to colleagues at the ICB, and not that I'm a member of staff of the ICB, so I don't know why I use the term colleagues. I think they're, you know, I think, I don't think they've got cruel intentions at all. I do appreciate that, you know, there are gaps in service provision elsewhere in Norfolk and Waverley, and I understand why there's a desire to redistribute resources. However, you know, as I said, based on the ICS and Green Qualities Framework for Action, it does commit to a principle of proportionate universalism, and Norwich is the biggest hotspot for healthcare qualities. Norwich does have the highest concentration of those plus inclusion health groups who need these services. And on that basis, I do think there is an argument for retaining that additional level of service provision in Norwich. In relation to the ICB budget gap, you know, that's a matter separate, really, from this motion, although I appreciate the connection. Clearly, that needs to be debated at another time. I do think there is indeed the massive capital investment in the local health service to generate efficiencies. You know, our estates, particularly the primary care estates, is, you know, very antiquated. Fuel costs are incredibly high. Tech's incredibly outdated. I was in hospital for a few weeks last summer.
Councillor Giles, can I have a clue?
Yeah. I've never seen a pager before, but I was well acquainted with them by the end of my stay. So anyway, but ultimately, we are all agreed that these services need to remain in Norwich, and that is what residents are going to be most interested in, most concerned with. And frankly, we are only an influencing body in relation to clinical healthcare.
Thank you, councillor Giles. We now move to the vote. All those in favour, all those against, abstentions, I can confirm the item has been carried. 9D, motion access to healthcare. As motion I see as amended has been determined, motion 9D is substantially the same motion. Therefore, this motion falls under six-month rule. This concludes the end of the meeting. Thank you all for attending.